This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. The time is now 7:30 and this is the July 8th, 2021 work session of the Allendale Mayor Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us via video and teleconference. We ask that you please mute your devices at this time so it's not to distract from the business of the meeting. We are just bear with us as we work out the technical.
Bring the real expert on.
Okay. There'll be several opportunities for the public to be heard tonight and we'll advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure, in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger.
Great, Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Stouch.
Here.
Councilwoman Wosinski.
Here.
And then Mayor Bernstein.
Here, thank you, Michelle. Public comments, so this is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public to comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please state your name and address for the record. You will have a three-minute time limit to address the governing body. Not seeing anyone, looking out here, not online. Close the meetings to the public for the first time. Administration Agenda Review. So, does anyone have any questions on the agenda items listed on the regular session tonight? Any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a introduction and some comments. We've been very fortunate in Allendale, working with SUEZ as our operations and management company for our water system over the last couple of years. Ron being here is very deeply involved, that we've been fortunate to have Jeff Pickenage came back and he really did a nice job for us over the last couple of years. And we're excited for him to have retired and moved with some family, so he's good. And I do want to introduce James, if I said it correctly. And he's going to be our new water operator. He will be working alongside of a second person, but you will be our major contact, correct? And already I can tell you that I like his follow-up. He's right on, he's appropriate, so you're straightforward. So, thank you very much and I just want to welcome you. So, I don't know if you met everybody else. Yes, and Michelle Ryan, our Borough Clerk over there too, maybe you didn't get to officially meet either. And hopefully you won't ever have to interact with Ray West or Lori. We do like him and he's funny. So, that's it. Thank you very much and welcome.
Great, and I ended up between the meetings.
Do you have anything you want to say?
Well, first off, I'd just like to thank the Mayor and Council for trusting me with your water system. I know it's a very sensitive subject with a lot of things, a lot of regulations going on. A little bit about me, I began with the water systems when I was 18-years-old and now 38. So, I've known this for 20-years. I started off in the East Hannover Township Water and Sewer Department, very, very similar to your water system. So, I'm very familiar with it. About five, yeah, five-years ago till almost today, I joined SUEZ Water. I started off with the Distribution Department down at Hackensack. Couple of years into it, my director brought me up to Hallworth, I'd worked with treatment facility. So, I'm in Operations Department, Operations, you know, is my life now. I watch Allendale Water System just as much as, you know, all Hackensacks and, you know, everything's right there at my fingertips. So, I'm very closely monitoring everything going on here. In addition, you know, I'm also in charge of the chemical treatment shop and they're constantly out, your wells filling up chemicals. I work very closely with electricians, machinists and all that, so I'm very much involved. You know, I was on the phone with Jeff quite often because he was more outside looking up, looking in, but I'm right in the middle. So, I just would like, you know, I would thank you all for, you know, giving me this opportunity and I look forward to working with you, you know, starting today.
Great, thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, any questions or comments on the agenda? Right, if you want to state.
Thanks, great to meet you, I'm so glad to meet you.
Pleasure, pleasure to meet you.
And have a great weekend.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, we're going to go to committee reports and I'm going to start. Mayor's report, the biggest thing, July 4th, which I think is one of the best days in Allendale, certainly. So, we were back at it again, celebrating July 4th in a big way. It was great and started to feel like, like normal. Amazing day capped off by spectacular fireworks overlooking our beautiful Crestwood Lake. Holiday Observers, we have two councilmen who are part of the Holiday Observers to you and to your whole organization. You guys were great, we're thankful for everything that you do as volunteers to continue in the borough tradition that I grew up with, you grew up with, right, and many of us, Tyler as well.
Thank you.
A huge thank you to Ron Kistner and the DPW headed by Dan Richards for all of their efforts to prep the town for the holiday weekend. Everything looked great and it takes a village, right? And we know, because we've been discussing this for how many months, not sure what COVID was going to let us do, but the Police Department, the Fire Department, OEM, AVAC, SER for lending their resources and keeping everyone safe during the weekend's events. So, it was just a special, special weekend, a special day. Borough Hall, happy to report Borough Hall is scheduled to reopen next Monday, July 12th. The safety and our health of our staff has been our utmost importance to myself, the council. And it was appropriate then to close Borough Hall, but we're now at our time, knock on wood, where we can reopen. We are grateful to our employees for their steadfast dedication to Allendale and making sure that services were provided. As we open, I want to take this, Ron, and you and everyone else, I mean, think back to more than a year ago when we had to close. And without missing a beat, how we went to Plan B and were able to provide the services to the residents. So, we changed the way we do things. So many things are now, you can access online through GovPilot. So, this, the Borough Hall may not be necessary because so much of it you can do from your home or your office or from wherever you are. The hours will be 9:00 to 4:30. So, looking forward to that for Monday. Our website is in the process of going up. Thank you to Communications Director John Gill and our Webmaster Tyler Yakarino for getting this off the ground after much discussion to move to a new platform. And Tyler, we're thinking mid-July, all right?
We're thinking, I talked to John this morning, I'm meeting with him tomorrow, we're looking at the 14th.
14th, that's great, wonderful, we're looking forward to it. Today, Ed was there, Amy was there, I was there. Thank you to Ron Kistner for hosting the Northwest Bergen County Administrators Meeting Luncheon at the Red Barn earlier today. Hamburgers and hot dogs were phenomenal. You started this tradition of Allendale, hosting Allendale's meeting at Crestwood Park a few years ago and it has become a much anticipated event for local, local mayors, administrators, and Bergen County Executive Jim Tedesco and County Commissioner Steve Tenelli were both there. They both gave us updates, it was time well spent and thank you for continuing to do that, for bringing it to Allendale, Ron. So, that is it for my report. I do have a Northwest Bergen Mayor's Meeting on Saturday where we were going to be discussing 5G. So, I will report back to the council on that. That's it for me. Ed, you want to give your report?
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to mirror your comments on July 4th. The Holiday Observers started putting it together with OEM during, right after our OEM meetings, hoping to try and get it off and they stuck to it and thank all the first responders, I don't want to miss anyone. DPW from the Cannon at 7:00 in the morning till 10:00, 10:30 at night with the lights and everyone crossing the street to get back home. It was quite a day and it was missed last year. Calls into the headquarters were 7,546. 911 calls were 857. Fire Department calls are 83 and EMS was at 204. And we're going to have a long public safety meeting next Tuesday and we'll have more to discuss about that.
Did you say a long one?
Oh, oh, it might be a long.
All right, I was hoping not, okay, thank you, Tuesday, that's right, I scheduled the Tuesday. Liz, would you like to give your report?
Sure, so our Water Committee team along with our municipal attorney, Ray West, and our expert helper, legal helper, Brian Skirbo, have been working with the SUEZ team to finalize the purchase agreement with SUEZ, which if everybody remembers from previous meetings, this is the legal document that translates the returned bid and SUEZ was determined to be the highest responsible bidder. So, this translates this into a legal document. And part of that process is us moving forward tonight with the first reading of our ordinance, which is going to help us have the question put on the, as a referendum for the November 2nd general election. So, again, for the public, you know, nothing will occur until if there is a successful passing of the referendum to sell the water system to SUEZ. However, these are all the steps that need to occur. And on that note, we will be having the second reading of this ordinance on July 22nd. And during my last public presentation from our Water Committee, we talked about it in the next presentation and it will be during our council meeting. So, we'll go along with the second reading of this ordinance. So, I don't know, is there something else you should add about that, right?
No, I think that that's, that's appropriate, is that there will be a full opportunity and the, the second reading of the ordinance and prospective adoption of it to fully present and to have any questions asked and answered.
Great, so I certainly, again, I encourage the public or anybody on, you know, our council to ask any questions of me at any time. I feel like that, you know, this has been moving along pretty well, so.
And we could just, we could just add to that, that even with the adoption or prospective adoption of the ordinance, that is just another step in the process, as you said, ultimately leading to the referendum of Election Day.
Exactly, yes, and we certainly will continue to have public meetings beyond this July 22nd for opportunities for people to ask questions of both ourselves and of SUEZ.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amy, would you like to give your report?
Sure, I would be happy to. So, 220, 230, actually really kind of focusing on 220 now, we've already closed on 230, but we, our teams have been working together, we're still working on documents that are going towards the closing. First, we have to get through the county. We have good news, potentially that we're on the agenda for next week. So, if that's the case, we can potentially close 45-days after that. Some bids came in today, we have not seen them yet. Hampshire needs to go through them and do some value engineering and we should hopefully get some exposure to that in the next week or so. And then if all goes as planned, we should be demoing by the end of the summer and then we'll be building our new Borough Hall and our 70 units by the end of this year into next year. Crestwood Lake, registration is strong, it's financially healthy, our revenue is, is up this year. If you went there on Monday, you would see why I saw Ed there. I don't think I have ever seen it that crowded in my 10-years of working with Crestwood Lake. It was completely packed and everybody has these really fancy resort-looking tents. Cool cabanas, they're everywhere. So, but I just, I feel like I need to say, we've already had two missing children at Crestwood Lake and we're really starting campaign to strongly, I don't want to say encourage, because it's not encouraged, demand, I guess is the word, that parents watch their children. These were young children that should not have been out of their parents' sight. In Crestwood Lake, if you lose your kid, we have to do a human chain. I don't know if people know what that is, but it is freaking dramatic and it was very, very scary. So, lifeguards are not babysitters. We've had parents go up to lifeguards and ask them to please watch their kids while they do something else. That is not acceptable. So, we're going to start taking names, if there, if it happens twice, their, their registration will have to get revoked. We have to get really strict with this because it's, there's been four drownings in this area in the past, like, three weeks and I don't mean to be overly dramatic, but, but this is very, very serious. It's a lake, it's not, it's not a pool and there's a lot of new people. So, we just, safety is always our priority at Crestwood Lake. Our next band is this Saturday, not Wednesday, sorry about the typo. It's Midlife Crisis, which is Born and Bread, Allendale Band. It starts at 7:00 PM, we actually are going to use the bandstand for the first time. It'll be kind of a soft ribbon cutting, we are not done, not done, everybody. So, don't put it on 0741, we still have landscaping to do and, but we want to see how the bands kind of fit in and how it all works before we, before we work on that and then hopefully we'll have a nice big, big celebration in the fall sometime. Fourth of July was so much fun, special thanks to Len Van Orden of the Holiday Observers. It was just a great day in Allendale, I'm so happy that the weather held out for them. I've already been actually chatting with the new president because I guess July 5th, the old president goes out and the new one goes in. Oh, September, okay, so I'm talking to him about for 9/11, so that's why I'm already talking to the new president. So, thanks, of course, to the DPW and everybody that participated in it, it was a fabulous event. The admins at the Red Barn today was great, it was actually very informative hearing County Executive Tedesco and Tenelli talk about all the counties doing and how they're pushing forward with the vaccines. Bergen County, I think, only has 60% vaccinations, they said, so they're opening up. Yeah, they're opening up a new center at Ramapo. So, instead of Bergen Golden, what is it, the Bridge? New Bridge, New Bridge, yeah, I always say Bergen Pines. So, anyway, and yes, we almost died in the storm, but we all survived. There was lots of lightning and we couldn't leave. 9/11, this is the 20-year anniversary of 9/11 this year. We opened up our paper program again, I met with the engraver this week. We are extending the paper program to all residents till the end of July and if anybody, John is going to send out a constant contact, letting everybody know how that they want to be part of our beautiful memorial, how they can be part of the memorial. So, the opportunity, like I said, will be open till the end of July and then we should have them all done by 9/11. We're working on, on getting lots of flags to really make it special. I did a lot of planning this week, I hopefully have a speaker, if somebody I think would be a great speaker and I think he wants to do it. It's still very hard for some people to talk about it, it's, it's very, very raw, even 20-years later. Backpipers are in place, I have a taps player in place already, I have a singer in place. So, it's coming together slowly but surely and it will be a somber day, but it'll be a, but it'll be a beautiful memorial as we always do. And that's it for me. You're welcome.
Matt?
Certainly. So, we received the first tranche of the American Rescue Plan money, about $350,000. It is going to go towards the revenue shortfalls due to COVID and also some much-needed sewer infrastructure, hopefully. Committee's been working on a few things, including an infographic-type piece, which will attempt to explain the new tax rate and the reassessment process, which is going to be starting up again. The next stage, which is the inspection of 25% of our properties, scheduled to begin about July 19. Letter explaining that will be going out next week. And other than that, we're keeping an eye on the spending and making sure that the borough continues to run smoothly. I would be remiss if I didn't echo the sentiments of everyone about 4th of July and thank Ron and everybody who contributed to making it a successful day. I actually secured a day off because it was Sunday, but unfortunately I did not meet Councilman O'Connell in the horseshoe pits for his sake, you know. But, that's all.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, I would have been knocked out in the first, I wasn't knocked out in the first round, so it's, it's all good. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Jim, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bernstein. The, the DPW received a nice thank you note from Len Van Orden, the, I guess, outgoing president of the Holiday Observers. They were very thankful for all the assurances that the DPW gave them to make sure that the 4th of July was a wonderful firework festivity. And on behalf of the DPW and myself personally, the Holiday Observers have always been a pleasure to work with. Their intentions are good and they, they accommodate us when, you know, we ask them to, you know, look left, look right, you know, remove this whenever. I wanted to give special, special thanks to Ray Frazier, he worked on both July 4th and July 5th. Danny Davis and Dan Richards and Ray, they got the lake cleaned up by 11:00 AM on July 5th, Monday, so that it could be opened and I just wanted to give a special thanks to that. With regard to the Green Team, I see that Mark Savastano is on, so I don't want to steal too much of his thunder because he's really been doing a fabulous job and I'm going to let him present it. But, one of the things that Mark and I are working on that I am going to be, you know, either leading or intimately involved with, with the Green Team, is the expansion of recycling in Allendale. I'd like to get more of the recycling, into the recycling bins, especially during the, the public events, whether it's a sporting event, a race, you know, the 4th of July. I think that having clearly marked and plenty of recycling bins and a public education program, so that people know how and where to recycle. If we make it easy for people to recycle, I believe that Allendale will up the recycling because there's a lot currently that should be thrown away that I think we could easily trap. But, as I said, I'm going to stop there on the Green Team and let Mark give the rest of the update. So, we have a lot of stuff that we're going to be working with the council on to help make Allendale and New Jersey and America a greener place, so thank you, Ari.
Great, thank you, Jim. So, staff reports, Ray West?
Yeah, I want to start by stressing a concern, why is it that only the attorney isn't given a microphone? I just thought there might be some, you know, some significance to that.
That has, yeah, as Councilman Hoven mentioned, a lot of, a lot of our efforts in the last couple of weeks have been to the water utility and putting together, that'll need the ordinance with, with Ryan and I do want to commend Ryan for, for his efforts on this, but more particularly the contract. I think we are probably about five iterations deep in dotting i's, crossing t's and getting all the language right. So, you know, while it's still a work in progress and there may be some, some, I'll say nuanced changes to it. You know, we've really done a lot of work going forward as a, as a, as a team on this. Worked with Ron on some contract matters, land use matters, personnel matters, many of which are ongoing. Tom has been working with our, I guess now we call it the 220 Committee.
Now, shorter.
And I know they had a meeting, Zoom meeting this morning, which is good and TJ's been working with the Clerk's Office with respect to outstanding Oprah requests, which apparently the floodgates we made open on, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Michelle?
Thank you. We're really busy in the Clerk's Office preparing to open back up to the public. Judy Collins, our Summer Administrative Assistant, has been organizing the office, completing records, long overdue, records, retention schedules, paperwork and preparing the records for archiving. We were able to move 25 boxes to the police station yesterday, so I just wanted to give a big thank you to Judy and to Ron and Dan Richards, Lane Simon, Ray Frazier and Lisa Crescente for all their efforts to, to get that done. It, it's a lot of effort in 90-plus degree weather to carry 25 boxes up to the third floor of the police station. So, thank you to everyone for that. Miles Mortimer, our Summer Intern, just completed a rather large project for us. He attached around 2,000 Building Department permit files and other such records to the corresponding property address in GovPilot. So, that'll help the Clerk's Office and the Building Department access records instantly and save us trips to archives and also help us when responding to the Oprah request. So, thank you to Miles. Speaking of Oprahs, Tatiana continues to respond to them. We're, I believe we're over 300 to date requests. And just to put it in perspective a little bit, how large our Oprah requests have grown. In 2018, we received for the year 330 total, so we're doing that in about six months.
Is every municipality like this?
I believe so, I, I think it's just exploded. Businesses have figured out, you know, how to request documents or records, you know, some weekly, some it seems daily. So, yeah, so I just wanted, you know, Tatiana does a great job of handling all the Oprahs in addition to all her other responsibilities, so I wanted to just give her a shout-out. And then John is working hard with Tyler to launch the new website next week or so. So, that will be a huge improvement over our current one and hopefully it'll, it should be very user-friendly. And so, I just wanted to thank Tyler and John. And, you know, I just sit and with my feet up on the desk. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron?
That's far from the truth there. I stole my thunder, I actually do just kind of sit back, the crew that we, the team that we put together make my life so much easier. It's just, you know, I noticed my emails were limited, on my week's vacation, I got a few, but I didn't get as many as I would normally get. I know that was a team effort to avoid, keep my blood pressure down, I do appreciate that. When we do open up, Anthony Hackett, Michelle, we're going to look at, we're going to present to the Mayor and Council possibly having a kiosk in the lobby, which is self-constructed permits and other use. This is a good thing that's come out of the pandemic, you know, it'll make, you know, people come to Borough Hall and then tell me if your home fill out a form, this way it'll be better for our residents to fall be on this kiosks and that's as little as I know about it and I will turn that over to Tyler and John and Michelle next week. In regards to the 4th of July celebration, a couple, I want to thank Sergeant John Matisse, headed up for the Police Department. Sergeant Matisse did a great job organizing that, Volunteer Fire Department has to be recognized. You know, we are, we have less staff at the DPW we have years past to cover all the, you know, as people leave, as Councilman O'Connell said, the safety, the fire department really stepped up and covered a lot of the areas that we used to cover. So, because the guy worked all day, it was actually 11:30, quarter to 12:00 when the guys got home. They were busy with, so, but having the fire trucks there, they were helping with the traffic. Councilman Stouch did acknowledge Ray, Danny, Danny, but Ray was there all day Sunday. He called me first thing Sunday morning, went home restless, came back Sunday night. I heard nothing but compliments, he said what a great job he did. He had the key for Joe to open up the van shell, just above and beyond. That's, it just shows, you know, that's beyond his job description, that's really care about the community and part of the community. I do have to mention one thing and I do appreciate, last night, Soddy Griffin I ran into. You know, I do go up to the lake at night after hours, like, just, that's my time to check things without being, you know, interrupted on things and I do see, this is, these couple of families weren't doing anything wrong, but they had little kids and they're by the water and they're, you know, over there. And again, the parents are there, they not paying attention, these parents weren't paying attention at night and the lake's closed. So, I went up to the Red Barn last night, it's happened a couple of times now and I, Soddy Griffin came through. He went down, he waited, you know, he told them to leave, he was very polite, very professional, maybe more than I would have been and, you know, he waited for them to leave, you know, as a courtesy. I will say they had New York plates, not New Jersey plates, so they weren't residents. So, this, again, you know, we're going to have to keep an eye on that. Yeah, we, you worry about daytime swimmers, nighttime, some tickets, you know.
Ron, you've put up new signs.
We have, we have additional signage, we have, you know, it's, my job is to make sure the borough is covered. Insurance-wise, we are, but as a person, and I know everyone up on that day is up there, the lives of the children are much more important, you know, so, you know, I worry about the legal industry, you guys actually care, we both care about the people, but you, you know, we got the additional sign. But, the problem is the people who are going to pay attention, read the signs and the ones, you know, walk right by the signs are the ones, you know, up there at night. But, that was it, that's all I have and we're almost right there in clocks, so, thank you, everybody. So thank you, everybody.
Right. Thank you very much. It is now eight o'clock, so I would request a motion to adjourn the work session. Thank you. It is now eight o'clock. So we will roll right into the regular session, July 8th, 2021, regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us via video and teleconference. At this time, please mute your devices so as to not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities for the, during this meeting for the public to speak. We will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger.
Great. Thank you. If you can all please join me, join me, rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Homan here. Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch?
Here.
Councilwoman Walczynski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Thank you, Michelle. So public comment on agenda items only. Mark Savistano, I'd like to go to you now. Councilman Strouch had mentioned your, your report, so now would be a good time if you want to give your report now.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to do that at the end, but thank you very much. I wanted to start off by saying that John Adams of Wyckoff, who's also a member of the Bergen Hub, and I attended the first public meeting of the Commissioners, that was in person, starting yesterday, and spoke to them about our initiatives to increase recycling of EPS Styrofoam. And we got a very nice reception from them. They're going to accept whatever documentation we have and help us along with our efforts. So I was very pleased with that. I also, I wanted to mention that we had sent out the survey and I directed it to Tatiana, which I understand be the person to communicate the survey to about EPS, but I haven't received the response. And I'd like to know if I should forward it to someone else or if that remains the person of contact to forward that survey.
He can send it to me.
Right. So send it to, to Michelle.
Okay.
We'll direct it from there. Thank you, Mark.
Okay, sure. And then also the, the effort at the library to collect CDs, DVDs and VHS tapes has gone exceptionally well. I'm receiving a call from Patricia Dursa Weekly to pick up boxes filled with the items and we'll be mailing them out soon. I was happy to see the, the response from the council to the Raptor problem regarding the open dumpsters. I consider that to be a Green Team item as well. And I'm happy to know that the council acted so expeditiously on that and is keeping, you know, big concern about our wildlife. One other thing that I want to mention, I, I brought up at the Holiday Observers event at the ball field, I asked one of the members, in fact, three different members, as to why we didn't have recycling barrels out. And I see probably that was an oversight and hopefully an opportunity that we can address by asking all of the organizations in town to consider following the recycling laws of New Jersey and Allendale and making sure that there are separation of all the recyclables. I saw that as a problem because of the efforts that we're making. And I'm sure that it doesn't take much effort to put a separate barrel and mark it strictly for bottles and cans and help us to increase our recycling. And that's, that's it. Well, I did send out that survey to all of the 71 municipalities in Bergen County and I'm compiling the results now. So I'll, I'll share that with the council. I do have all the results.
Great, Mark. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else from public wish to be heard on any agenda items only?
Well, Mayor, I did want to ask a question about the agenda item regarding the water. Is there a member of Suez that's with us today that could answer a question?
No.
No, okay. Well, I understand that there will be somebody in the future.
Correct. Right. On July 22nd, a full opportunity to present and questions will be answered, et cetera.
All right. I'll save my questions for then. Thank you.
Great.
But please email it in advance, just so, I mean, to my mind, it's always better to have questions out there. That way we can make sure that things are flushed out appropriately. So please do.
Happy to do that.
All right. Great, Mark. Thanks.
Thank you. Now we move to the introduction of ordinances where we have one. So I would request that a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 21-10 and set the hearing for July 22nd, 2021 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
Don't move, Homan.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
Sure. This is ordinance 21-10, an ordinance of the Borough of Allendale and the County of Bergen, New Jersey, approving an agreement of sale between the Borough and Suez Water, New Jersey, Inc. for the sale of the Borough's water supply, treatment and distribution system and authorizing a proposal to be printed on the ballot for consideration by the voters within the Borough at the general election on November 2nd, 2021, providing for the sale of the Borough's water supply, treatment and distribution system to Suez Water, New Jersey, Inc. There was a word missing there. Sorry. New Jersey. Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Walczynski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Next, we move to the consent agenda. I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Don't move, Strouch.
Thank you, Jim. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Matt. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso is absent. Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Walczynski?
Yes.
Great. Any unfinished business? Any new business? We did our committee reports, mayor report, staff reports. Final time, open the floor to the public on any matter. Not seeing anyone. I'll close the meeting to the public. I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
Don't move, Homan.
Thank you. Request a second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much, everyone. And Ryan, thank you for jumping on.
Thanks.
Yeah. Good night, everyone.
Good night.